Good morning, I will now motion to order March tenth twenty twenty two. Before I turn the meeting over, I need to bring something up. Yesterday, I received a call from Ms. Taylor Sweet. She is with the Coalition.
National Council on Educational Powers.
And she wanted to be part of the hiring process. And I explained to her that we had already set the guidelines. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kupursky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Ms. Sweet. We spoke on the phone yesterday. It's nice to see you in person.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So what I explained to Ms. Sweet is that this is, under policy, a school board workshop. And that, under the policy, the public is not allowed to speak at workshops unless the board allows it. And that would be a majority of the board. And so she said she was going to be attending and wanted to speak, as the chair indicated. And so with that request being made, I reviewed the policy with her. I think it would be appropriate at this time for the board to, if anybody would like to hear her speak, I would put it that way. If you would like to be heard on that issue, otherwise, if you're silent, we would assume that we would remain consistent with their policy and not hear from people. As your council, I do have to advise you, if you allow one group or one person to start to speak at workshops, that opens the door to then other people saying that they have a right to speak. And the board has never had anybody speak other than invited guests or vendors under contracts such as FSBA in the case of today's meeting. So with that, unless there's anybody who would like to hear from Ms. Sweet, and if not, Ms. Chair, then I think we can move forward.
Would anyone like to hear? Then we will stick to our policy.
Can I clarify why I'm here?
Ms. Sweet.
My organization is a superintendent search organization, an organization, a company that searches for superintendents.
Ms. Sweet, you're not allowed to speak. The board has already.
I'm not the public, that's the point.
Yeah. Pursuant to her policy, you are the public because you're not under contract. Well, I understand, but you are not allowed to speak at a workshop. The board has already determined that. And so they're going to move forward with their business agenda for this workshop. You are welcome and happy to stay and listen to the board. And as I mentioned to you yesterday, there will be an action meeting following this work session. And you'll be allowed to speak to the agenda item at that meeting. And of course, you can come to any regular meeting, the next one of which is on March twenty second, and speak on any general business of the district after the adjournment of the meeting.
You are violating my civil rights.
Well, I disagree with that. And if you continue.
We do a superintendent's search, just like the broader school board organization does. We do the same thing they do, we do.
Madam Chair. Ms. Sweet.
It's to get all the advice.
Madam Chair, would you imbue your authority to continue the process of removing?
And this pandemic has asked us to come outside of policy.
Ms. Sweet, if you continue to speak, you will be in violation of not only your policy.
But you're violating my civil rights. And you know, and I pray.
Statute one thousand one point three seventy two. That requires the school board to provide.
You're violating my civil rights.
And so this is your only warning that if you continue to speak.
We identify superintendent's qualifications. That's what we do. That's what we do. That's all I want to do is give advice.
Okay, are you finished, Ms. Sweet?
Why don't we all go next door?
Or somebody wants to speak to you? Okay. And then give us travel time so that we can start promptly at ten o'clock. If that's all right with everyone, we'll make sure that we. This is the May tenth. The school board meeting was, yes. But this is the first time we have spoken as a group about moving it to ten. Kathy, you have a question? Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry, you're right. You're absolutely right. May third. Thank you. I wrote May tenth, ten. So, yes. Okay. And May eleventh, we have blocked four interviews. We have three days blocked. The turnaround breakfast has been scheduled for May eleventh. Is that correct? Okay, May eleventh. I'm looking for May third as the one that we're moving to ten o'clock here. And then May eleventh, we're talking about the turnaround breakfast. If board members are going to be attending that, it's going to be very hard for us to do interviews early that day. The turnaround breakfast does tend to last a long time, for those of you that have been there. But when has it ever gotten over at nine? Yeah, exactly. So. So I think we may need to address that a little bit later. We'll get some more information. And see, you know, are they really? Or are we looking at maybe ten, maybe even starting the interviews in the afternoon? We may find after we go through our, picking the people that we would like to interview, we may find that we have few enough that we could do the afternoon of the eleventh, then the twelfth and the thirteenth, as we have scheduled. So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up on that. So if you would like to attend the turnaround breakfast, we'll make arrangements as a board.
Is that the individual interviews? Individual interviews or is that group interview?
It'll be both.
Oh, both on that day?
Those two and a half days.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't done, we haven't come up with the exact schedule as to, until we know how many, we won't know the exact schedule. But in that two and a half, or what currently set aside as three days, we would do the interview as a group as well as the individual interviews.
Okay.
So we will interview individual candidates as a group. And then we'll interview each individual in our offices or somewhere. So just know if you would like to attend that meeting, that breakfast, that we're going to work around it for everyone. Other than that, I think we have a fairly important couple of things to do, but a fairly light agenda and topics. So I'm going to turn it over to both of you, Dr. Vogel, as well as Mr. Riker. Thank you very much for being here.
So Messina is going to start by giving us a review of the survey. So Andrea.
Yes, thank you so much. First, I cannot begin to tell you how appreciative we are for the Pinellas Education Foundation. And we want to extend our extreme thanks to Dr. Byer over there, who really was on top of this. And it's a lot of information, as you all well know. She sends her apologies that she could not be here today. She actually misunderstood and thought the meeting was Tuesday. She was prepared to do a presentation. But she is very proud of the work. And we're very honored to have worked with the Pinellas Education Foundation. I think if you looked at the survey, and I'm confident you all did, you saw, what was it? One hundred and forty-six pages, one hundred and forty-four pages of really interesting information. The executive summary at the beginning kind of helps to frame where this information is coming from and some of the conclusions that are made. So for the public's information, I want to point out that a total of three thousand seven hundred and three responses were collected. That's an extraordinary number, and it helped to provide a real robust set of information. When we look at the perspective of respondents, where we asked them, you know, sort of what constituency they represented, what we notice, and what I want to point out, is that your current teachers, your current instructional staff, and your current administrators make up a large chunk of the respondents. Besides that, the next largest chunk is going to be the parents, where you have current or former parents. And then from there, it kind of goes down where we have some community supporters and others who participated. So the one conclusion that they had, which is actually the second item on the executive summary sheet, is that the quality of teachers and instruction in Pinellas County schools, that is the number one success. It's also the number one challenge, maintaining that, especially during times when teachers were seeing retirements and we are seeing shortages in the classroom. You all know better than I do how many teachers you probably still have positions open for. I personally found it very interesting looking at the current and former student response column. If you move to page three, it's the second from the right. I'm always interested to kind of hear what students have to say because they are the ones who are participating in all of your programs. And they too marked high-quality teachers and instruction as the greatest strength of the county. So I think that that is something I really wanted to point out. When we look at the challenges, and the challenges are those things, we discuss the challenges as those things that the new superintendent needs to be aware of and will probably need to address when he or she comes to town. But you'll notice that district climate and culture. We know that public education right now across the nation is having challenges with climate and culture and with discord in the community being reflected at school board meetings. So that is not an unusual or unexpected response. And again, I was interested also in how high one of the challenges were listed, which was the parent and family involvement piece. There are a few other items I wanted to point out. And I thought it was interesting when you compared, let's see, the strengths and weakness comparisons, which is on page nine. You can see how some were consistently both a strength and a challenge, and others were seen as a strength or seen as a challenge. So that can help you identify that. When we specifically, and I'm moving on to page ten now, when we specifically look at the primary leadership qualities in the new superintendent, the primary qualities, the highest ranked quality was integrity. Just under that is understanding local community needs. Under that would be the effective communicator, builds and supports strong teams, and has an instructional background. And I will point out the instructional background piece because if you, like I, read every single comment on all of those pages in the back, I cannot recall a single comment that said that the new superintendent in Pinellas County did not need an educational background. Every statement that referenced education all said it was really crucial and important for your next superintendent to have an instructional background. That's not the case in some of the districts where we work. Some districts are looking for, in some cases, and willing to embrace somebody that's maybe a non-traditional candidate, like a businessperson or a military person. But that's not what we saw in this particular survey. There were a number of, throughout the comments, throughout the open-ended answers, there were a number of names that were submitted, you know, that so-and-so would be a good person to reach out to. I want you to know, we collect all those names. We add them to any names that were given to us during any of the forums. We reach out to these people. And we make sure that they understand that this opening is available and that someone has recommended that they be told about it and find out, you know, kind of help gauge their interest. So that is the data that we have here. It is designed specifically to help us determine the qualities and qualifications, the challenges and the strengths. That's something the board can use at a later time. That's something that most new superintendents will absolutely read and want to know about so that when they come into a county, they can interact and address some of the challenges that were identified and recognize some of the strengths. But we're specifically looking at how does this survey gel with the information that we received from your in-person focus groups, which you should have had summaries on all of those as well. I will, however, turn over now to Dr. Vogel and Mr. Riker, who were physically boots on the ground in those focus groups so that they can tell you a little bit about how those went and how the data from the focus groups coordinates with the data from the survey. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you very much, Andrea. First, I'd like to give you some observations about the focus groups and the forums that John and I conducted. First, we have to commend your technology team and Beth and Jen. And also Kathy was at every forum also and focus group. And I will tell you, you have an A-plus team. They were absolutely phenomenal. And we've worked with a lot of districts, and they were there with us every time. And we were able to, because of the board desire, conduct a hybrid model where we had people joining online, we had people in person, and then we had the remote sites also. So that was very, very impressive. Some other observations, the schools that we attended, they were all extremely spotless. It was amazing. Going to high schools at the end of the day, they were, and you could tell that the plant operators, custodians, were very proud of their work. I was very impressed with that. And I really noticed a pride and sense of accomplishment throughout the organization. And I know there are, you can talk a little bit about some of the challenges that people have that came out in that survey. But what, you know, my observation was, is a lot of those are external with what people are facing, with COVID, with all the new legislation coming down, you know, with the challenges that are external to the district. And but the people that we interacted with at the schools were all very positive and enthusiastic about their work. And one thing I think is really hard for a district to do is have everyone in the organization, if they're a plant operator or anyone, kind of see how they connect with the vision, mission, and beliefs. And that was something that I really saw. They knew that. And I think I really think that's really important, especially even when you walk into this building, the first thing you see is what your vision is, hundred percent student success. So that was very favorable. Again, as what Andrea said, quality of teachers' instructions and instruction, I was impressed because parents brought this up. They used the term grit. They said, we really appreciate teachers having to almost overnight learn a new method of teaching. They said that they were, and one of them said, well, the teachers had previous technology training, so they were able to adapt fairly quickly. So they were really, there was no one at these meetings that had an axe to grind. And they were all very positive. And we had a pretty good number of people that attended. If they were not there, as you saw the numbers in person, they were there, you know, online. The other thing that I observed is that there were comments on the accessibility to the board and the superintendent. And when I heard that, I was very impressed. And it went back to something that, what I call a district, I always, I don't like to wait around. But when you call Pinellas County Schools, the second prompt is the school board. And then you get Kathy almost immediately. And for me, that's impressive. Normally, the school board members are prompt nine, you know, or at the ends. You have to listen to all of these to get to the school board. And I mentioned that to Kathy, and she said, maybe that's why I get so many calls. But anyway, I thought that was extremely impressive that, you know, that people could call and they get, that's accessible. So I thought that was very positive also. And finally, I think always looking for kind of an overall theme, you know, for what we're doing. And actually, I'm going to give Beth and Jen credit for this one. The whole theme is, what people want to see is they want to accelerate the advancements of the organization. Accelerate the advancements. And I always use the term, you know, I could use the term building on our success. They use the term accelerate the advancements. And I think that says the same thing, and I like their terminology better. And when you see their brochure, which Beth is going to talk about later, the theme there is dive into a thriving district. So I think that sets the stage for, you know, the work that Dr. Grego and his team and the board has done. And we're at this point now where, you know, what are the next steps going to be? So what we did is basically then took all of the data, which you've all received from all of the forums and the focus groups. And then we went ahead and, through a non-scientific process, drafted up a set of qualities for your consideration. And I took advantage of the expertise of Beth and Jen. And they went ahead and kind of put the Pinellas touch to those qualities. And you received that this morning. They're basically the same. And so what we would do with this, this, we feel, is a really important document because this drives a lot of what you're looking for in the new superintendent. And so we would post this on the portal after the board approves it. So I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look through it now or if it looks okay. It doesn't have, it probably doesn't have every single thing. But it has, we think we've captured what we heard from through the forums, the focus groups, the students. And then we worked through this with the, also with the, looking at the survey. And we did address some of those concerns that, as you can see, there's a number of them in there regarding concerns about teachers. For example, understanding the challenges and opportunities that teachers and staff face daily and shows appreciation to recognize success regardless of size or scope. What we try to do, I don't need to take the time to do that now, but I could go through every one of these and point out how it relates to what we heard. And interestingly enough, the first word that we had was integrity. And that came up loud and clear. And somebody asked me how you can measure resiliency. Well, we had one of our searches where some superintendent led his district through Hurricane Katrina. I mean, so some of these things, and what you'll find is when people apply, they will look at this sheet and they will kind of focus their resumes. When you start asking questions, you can start using these to review too. So like I said, this is non-scientific, but I think it's a good document, especially the way Beth and Jen have added to it a little bit and kind of reworded it. So Andrea, that kind of ties, I think, all of that piece in together. So if board members have any initial questions on this, we could answer those right now.
How many, do you have any idea how many actual people participated in? Did you have five hundred, three hundred, approximately?
We had probably about two hundred people, John.
Yeah, I think in a combination of their participation.
Okay. We had.
Total or for each one of them?
Oh, no, that would be kind of total.
Total.
I'd say two hundred, two twenty-five.
Okay. But then we had, if you look at the students, we had about fifty students. The student forum was absolutely amazing. You all saw that. And Beth and Jen had that on. And what some of the schools did was they had a group of students together, sitting around the table. We were all doing it virtually. And we sent the forum out to the students ahead of time, and they were well-prepared. So we had, and then if you look at the staff participation, we had fifty, we had fifty district level here and about seventy principals. So school level. But aside from those, as far as people that joined online or others, it was about that number. So everything went, I thought, exceptionally well through the whole process.
Sounds good. Few hundreds of them.
But that's total. Can I ask my first? Clarifying question on that. That's total in all the focus groups, right? How many?
I think.
I think you had a breakdown.
I think the two hundred would kind of be the community forums.
Okay. Online and face-to-face?
Yes. That was from just the schools that we have the community forums at. The administrative group was separate, that, you know, we had an instructional forum as well that was separate. So I think kind of community-wise, about two hundred.
And that counts online and face-to-face? How many were face-to-face in those three buildings, do you know? I think it's in the document.
It's in the document.
It was like a very.
It was a relatively small number, right?
Right. So you had, like, only that many people showed up to the building?
Correct, right.
Okay.
And zero were at the satellites. Zero came to the satellites. And there were only about sixteen.
We had sixteen.
Individual people attend, maybe nineteen, I think you said, in the people, but sixteen individuals.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We had, we had four and nine, and then we had twelve, I think, individuals of those three.
Andrew might.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have the summaries in front of me. And for each summary, it tells you how many attended. And it says how many attended virtually, how many attended physically. So it's listed on every single one, so you can actually see it by event.
So there weren't like two hundred people showing up?
Correct, that's correct, right. And we had, I think, our largest responses there were the teacher forum. We had about, if I remember, about fifty there.
Think a little more than.
More than that, Andrea has those there. And we also, and then we had the large support staff forum also too. So when we include all those, it was somewhere around that number. So I think that we did, we had, you know, the board offered that opportunity. And then when you think about that, plus we had over thirty-four hundred surveys respond, survey responses. So I think we had a pretty good cross-section of the entire community in coming up with these.
Speaking of that, speaking of that, give me some sense of numbers. How does that resonate as far as, is that a large participation? Medium, small?
I would say, and this is just certainly an opinion, but I would say when a district is high-performing like Pinellas is, there aren't, no one was there, if someone had huge issues to bring forward, you probably would have had more turnout. We found that more people also now are coming online than in person because of COVID. And so we have found that we've had better responses now on, you know, on just doing it virtual. And a lot of.
There's a thirty-four hundred that you spoke of is a pretty good number.
For the survey?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually thirty-seven hundred.
Okay, I'm sorry, thirty-seven hundred.
Okay.
If we didn't have the survey, I would be concerned about the quality.
The consistency of the input. But the survey gave us, you know, a lot of data also.
It did. I think most school boards still want to offer the face-to-face. But then by your model of having the online accessibility like that, I think that opens it up a little bit. So I feel very comfortable with what we were able to come up with as far as, you know, what the qualities that the board might be looking for. But of course, this is your document. And so I want to make sure that you feel comfortable with it. And I can go through any of these, or if you have any questions about them, I'd be happy if we could answer those.
Any comments or questions?
About all of them?
About any of the qualities, yes.
The list of qualities.
Right.
Right. And I would refer to the version that has, they're essentially the same. It's the version where the paragraph starts at the top that you received it.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Let's say, it looks like this. It says at the top, Pinellas qualities. And we can talk about the top paragraph if you want, but we're looking at the qualities. We'll look at demonstrated experience in just a second.
Okay.
But let's look at the qualities first.
Are these in order of importance or?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, I see on number five, it says, understands the challenges and opportunities that teachers and staff face daily, shows appreciation. Then on number eight, makes school and classroom visits a priority, visible, approachable, intentional way. I think, yeah, I just think we're in a time where, you know, we're always in a time where the rubber meets the road with our classroom teachers, period. That's where student outcomes happen. That's where the day-to-day, you know, education experience happens at that classroom teacher level. So understands the challenges and opportunities that they face daily. And I just don't know if there's anything else to be said around, you know, actively. I don't, I don't know how to say it, but it's one thing to understand the challenges, but then just understand them. But what about, you know, I don't know how to say it.
Trying to improve.
Yeah, actively.
Yeah, what are you going to do about it?
Actively, yeah.
Engaging.
Actively engages and.
Okay.
Someone help me, I'm having troubles here. Someone help me, I'm having troubles here, but.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, just something more, more active there, I wonder.
I. I think though that number eight does cover it and really the role and function of the job also is to create teams that support those. Not necessarily.
Not for the superintendent themselves, but to create a philosophy and an understanding so that when the area superintendents are out there and at the principals and that we understand that. Supporting, understanding and, you know, not just saying, oh, I'm sorry, it's hard. You know, not just being compassionate for what a classroom teacher goes through on a daily basis, but understanding that that's where, where we need to actually take action to make sure that. That's a good place to be.
Really supports the growth of something more than just recognize it, but actually acts upon.
Yeah, I don't know if there's.
Is it understands and addresses the challenges or, um.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Faces the challenges, you know, um, faces, I think.
Yeah, encourages, um. Now we can think about it, that's just, I guess I was just looking for some sort of little more active.
Works to solve.
Active element.
Yeah, something that shows that they're gonna work on those challenges and embrace the opportunities.
Yeah, I think John's got some wording on that.
Okay.
John.
Well.
Sorry.
On number five?
Maybe in this direction, understands the challenges and opportunities that face, that teachers and staff face daily and actively engages in addressing those challenges.
I think that's great. And then, and then also maybe just a period and shows appreciation for and recognizes successes.
Right.
Ben.
Yeah.
Okay, say it again. Uh, okay, understands the challenges, what they actively engages, whatever you have.
Yes, uh, understands the challenges and opportunities that teachers and staff face daily and actively engages in addressing those challenges. While recognizing the successes regardless of size or scope.
Yeah, that's.
Something great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Anyone else?
Several of those relate to exactly what, what you're, what we're talking about here based on, on what we heard, so that's, that's very good. And those are, what happens is during the process, when you're interviewing, when you're coming up with questions, these are some of the questions that you'll be focusing on and ask whoever is applying, you know, how they're able to do that. Good.
Lisa?
Um. So I'm linking it, demonstrated experience. We've spoken at length throughout this on about the fourth and fifth bullet point. Says to improve student performance, close achievement gap, enhance career and technical education opportunities for students in place. One thing we did not mention in this section is the improvement of, um, high achieving programs like gifted or opportunities for, uh. Like AP education, like higher education opportunities and including something along those lines in here. It's talking about, um, asserting career and technical opportunities and closing achievement gap, working on students who, who need, um, additional help, but nothing for like your gifted.
Or excellence.
Yeah, your ex, yeah, something on those lines, uh, with that type of a language to, um, exceptional education, you know, not exceptional education, but.
Right.
Accelerated, I guess.
Educational excellence across.
Yes.
All, um.
Something maybe to, to nod to gifted and. Students in AP.
AP courses and everything else.
Something like.
Honors courses in middle school.
What about demonstrated experience improving and expanding opportunities for high achieving students or high achieving learners?
Oh, that's a great.
I like that, Andrea.
High achieving.
Did you go through that one time a little bit slower?
We already have demonstrated experience, so the bullet would read improving and expanding opportunities for high achieving learners.
Yes.
Cause there has been a lot of work that has been accomplished and started in, in this area. So I think it's a good point that you brought forward.
Yes, and that's definitely on the survey too, that came out in the survey too, excellent.
Anyone else's input, questions, thoughts?
Um.
Caprice?
Thank you. It's mentioned that one of the biggest challenges the new superintendent will need to address is parent and family engagement. Um, is there a possibility of emphasizing that as one of the qualities? I know it has, um, values partnerships, um, generates positive enthusiasm for accomplishment. But I don't think that really gets at the parent and family involvement piece.
Um, Caprice, would you want that as one of the qualities or with some demonstrated experience?
Demonstrated experience would be good. Well, great.
Thank you.
What about demonstrated experience engaging families and community?
Works for me, what about you, Caprice?
Can we add effectively?
Sure.
Thank you.
Effectively engaging families and community. And just so you guys know how these demonstrated experience, how it will play out when people are applying. If they recognize that these are your priorities because we have these bullet points, typically these will be the kinds of things that they will either, A. Uh, mention in their cover letter with some evidence that they can point to, sometimes they'll have links to things, whatever. Uh, B, the letters of support that they request will be, uh, from people that can speak to some of these items. Uh, C, they will, in any opportunity to answer questions during either group or individual interviews. They will bring these things in and/or we will create some of the public questions around some of these. So that they can publicly express in, in the public interview. Uh, how they have demonstrated this experience, which I can promise you will then set. People in your community as well as board members off kind of validating whether or not what they have said is true.
I think that's why I, I brought up the teacher piece because I think that teacher retention and teacher satisfaction is an important element. And I would like for that to be addressed in their information and in their interviews. So that's why I want that to be clear.
Excellent.
Any other comments, any other additions, deletions? Okay, yes.
I've, I've captured the last two. Andrea, did you capture number five? I want to make sure we get this correct.
I worded it based on what I thought I heard John say, which is understands.
Look on the monitor.
Okay.
There it is, okay.
Got it, okay, John wrapped it, teacher said, actually, yes, okay, excellent.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Andrea.
I was just gonna say, I truncated it a little bit by, on the second line after challenges, I used a semicolon. And then put recognizes successes regardless of size and scope, just to kind of make it a little tighter.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and Caprice?
Does the board see value in including, so one of the strengths based on the survey is student engagement opportunities, athletics, clubs, extracurriculars. Um, do, do you see it as, um, important to include this as a demonstrated experience? Or do you believe that's something that would kind of come along based on the staffing model that's developed?
Personally, I'm inclined to say that it'll come along.
Okay.
Um, however, that's one person's opinion. Rest of you.
And I think it also goes, sorry. I think it, um, you could, when we develop questions for interview, that could be something that we probe further. If it goes on to, um, effective programming. So building leadership teams to develop and implement innovative and effective programming. You know, part of programming is extracurricular clubs and things like that, so or arts, and you, you know, there's a lot we could include. I think it'll be important to ask those questions in interviews though, so they don't get. Some folks do have that perspective of not having extracurriculars be of value and we as a board have numerous times like that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you both for your feedback on that. I know we, if we look at it survey, we can go on and on about the qualities and demonstrated experience, which is why. I thought it was important to ask if there was consensus to include that, but I agree. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Um, one thing that I would like to ask is that, you know, we kind of put some things together if we just give the flexibility to make sure that all of this is in the same tense when we go through it just grammatically. You know, we prob, I think we did it, but just in case, I'll be checking. So if it's not exactly word for word when it comes back to you, it's because they may have said instead of, um. Improve, uh, expanding opportunities, it might be to expand opportunities. That's all I'm saying. Content will still be there, but we're just looking, Scrivener's notes, yeah. Anything else going once, going twice? All right, shall we move down to demonstrated experience?
Thank you so much for this. What we'll do is, um, um, I think Jen and Beth have this on their monitor from Andrea. And they'll go ahead and edit it. We'll use this format and this would be posted with the portal then, so we've got it. Okay, great, they're already on top of it, okay. Yeah, and this is what I'm saying, this has been a tremendous opportunity for us to work with your team. It's been a real team effort.
Our pleasure, yeah.
That's, thank you, okay.
Um, we haven't done demonstrated experience yet. Can we read over that and see if there's anything? And also the first paragraph. So right now, let's go to demonstrated experience. Got it?
Um, thank you, Mrs. Cook. Some of the things mentioned were addressed in the demonstrated experience. But I think it's important to highlight leading a large school district that is ethically, ethnically and culturally diverse to successful outcomes. Um, because that's something that I saw in a doc, another document that wasn't necessarily mentioned. So I think it's important that we have it here. So if it's needed to be added to the other draft document, we can be consistent. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else in that area? Okay, and everybody read the top paragraph and good with it? All right, let's move on.
Excellent, thank you. And next, I think we wanted to talk about qualifications. And, uh, what, uh, our, uh, recommendations were for, for board discussion would be minimum qualifications. Would be a master's degree from an accredited institution. Ten years of educational leadership experience or at least five years in an executive level leadership position. And then we would like, uh, from what we heard, whoever would have, would obtain this job would need to become a resident of Pinellas County within six months of employment. So those would be the minimum qualifications.
Okay, Laura, we'll let you go first. I have some.
I had a question about how, how we define executive level leadership.
Okay, perfect. May I answer that? Because I have a suggestion for that. That's the only reason why I asked if I could do that. Um, my suggestion is going to be that we go with seven years of educational leadership experience. That could be, um, principal level, it could be a district level, whatever, with at least three, uh, three years. Um, at a superintendent's cabinet position or the equivalent. What it would mean is in some of the small, if we just say district level, um, some of the smaller counties may have somebody that's, um. A director of, you know, the arts or whatever, that has never sat directly with the superintendent in a decision-making capacity. And the way it's written, it would, it could possibly open it up for that. So what this would do is seven years of any of that kind of experience, district level, classroom, um, school level. But at least three years that where you're sitting and making decisions with the superintendent. Understanding the overall impact of everything that you do, every little decision and how it, it moves. So that would include deputy superintendents, it would include all of the people on, um, for example, the superintendent's cabinet, that level of experience. And having to have some of that as opposed to what might be a director somewhere else. And, um, so I, I would like to do something along those lines with that.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Should we include in the wording potentially something to address that if those decision, those, those decisions of that position. Were affecting the entire district versus just particular departments?
That's, yes, that's why the cabinet level position, that's deputy superintendents. That is, um, you know, people that head up HR, that head up teaching and learning, that head up, um, you know, high school, all of those. Not high school specifically. Dr. Gregor, who would be in, on ours as examples of people of the cabinet level? TIS, all of those.
Yeah, they're, they're individuals that lead up major divisions, but they're also, more importantly, I agree with the conversation. They're a part of the hundreds of decisions that are made on a weekly, daily basis. So they are being exposed to decisions made even outside of their divisions and finance and the human resources and teaching and learning. And TIS, uh, and, and student services and so forth. So it's that exposure to district-wide decisions, I think, you're after.
Years.
Good, thank you.
I like. I like the suggestion of having the wording reflect, rather, you know, not necessarily cabinet level. But the, the wording to reflect district-wide decision-making or understanding district-wide. Well, impact of the, just like some district-wide.
Yeah, so, but in some of the smaller districts, I think that would mean something different than what it would mean for us in a large district. And if we're only looking for someone coming that has experience with students of twenty-five thousand or more. I think we have to be a little more, um. A little more direct and a little more descriptive as to what we're really looking for. That's my concern.
Do we want to then add a minimum qualification that, move that preferred to minimum with a?
Well, that is the minimum. What I would then suggest is that under preferred, we delete this, um, the line that says experience as a superintendent, district super, um, area super. What is it? I, assistant superintendent, I crossed it out. So that third line under preferred, we would not need because it's explained.
Up in this.
In the minimum qualifications.
Right, that they had to have this cabinet level.
Right.
I agree.
Cabinet level.
Bringing it up as a minimum qualification as opposed to a preferred.
And other, other districts may be structured differently. I don't, I don't know, they all call it a cabinet.
No, that's why we said, or the equivalent.
But they could explain.
Or equivalent.
Right, or, or so, or, or equivalent.
Yeah.
I think, I think the cabinet, word cabinet position indicates that it is for the entire district.
I would hope, if we have.
I think that's a good term.
If we have someone applying for that, I would hope they would understand what a cabinet level position is.
Right.
Um. Yeah.
See what it is.
They don't want it.
Are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay, and so then, as I just stated, under the preferred qualifications, I would delete the third line of experience as superintendent, assistant superintendent. Or positions of similar responsibility.
I would just leave it on.
Ms. Admin, too.
Yes.
If we're done with that part, I had another question about that section.
Okay, if everybody agrees with that, then, okay, now we can move on.
Um, experience in a school district of at least twenty-five thousand students, how is that determined? I'm looking at the documents. Um, provided by FSBA with the columns of the school district and the number of students, et cetera. So how did, how did we come up with at least twenty-five thousand?
I'm going to, that was a recommendation from FSBA, so I'm gonna let them answer it.
Yeah. Pinellas County, because of its size, is one of the largest school districts in the entire nation. And most school districts, um, are not this size. So we basically look at twenty-five thousand as a, as a kind of a, a number that is a large district. But, uh, if you make it a higher number than that, you're significantly decreasing your pool of, of, of people that could apply for it. So that's why, um, we, we picked that particular number.
And if I would add, Dr. Bob, there are some states that their largest school district may well be only twenty thousand students in the, in the entire state. So it, it, Florida and Texas are historically.
in the, in the entire state. So it, Florida and Texas are historically known for large, large school districts. And many states are very small.
Right, because they're organized by city instead of county.
Also, just to explain why we think that's important is because there are systems and processes that have to be in place for larger districts that smaller districts just have no experience with. And we believe that that's important for a district your size.
Thank you very much. I think it's important to have this conversation publicly so that if the board decides to continue with preferred qualification of experience in a school district with at least 25,000 students, people know the rationale.
Thank you. You know, and that's just to get the, the applications in. We may find that, we find an applicant that has 26,000 and it's great, you know, and we may also find that there are people that have experience in larger districts and those might be the people we prefer. So it's not, you know, definitely somebody of 25,000. Eileen?
I have a question. This teaching experience is under preferred. You know, when you look at the qualifications, wouldn't the teaching experience be a minimum qualification? How are they going to relate to teachers? How are they going to relate to what's required in the classroom if they themselves have never been teachers?
It is under preferred.
It's under preferred, but should it be under minimum?
Like required?
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if we're saying that they have to go in and they have to work with teachers and, and they understand what, what the staff is going through, don't they have to have that experience themselves? And maybe I'm wrong. I'm just, as a former teacher, that's, I want somebody that could understand and, and talk, you know, the inner workings of it. I, I don't know.
It was important with the survey information that we received as well.
Instructional.
Uh, I'm looking at the 10 years of educational leadership experience.
But you don't necessarily have to, because I could have been a school counselor and then a principal and then a district leader, or I could have been in charge of, of TIS or human resources and had leadership and never been in the classroom. But I think being in the class, I concur that being in the classroom, having been in the classroom is an important role for a superintendent, I think, as we see in the survey.
If you make it a minimum, it's gonna, it's, you know, that's gonna narrow that pool potentially. And so do we make it a preferred? And then it's part of our decision-making process and it's one of the things that might ultimately tip the scale. But do you, so do you narrow, 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 you know, or do you keep it a little bit open, it's preferred? And what if somebody was a counselor but not a classroom teacher? Or other kinds of support, instructional support staff, but not, you know, how do we define teaching experience?
Classroom teaching experience.
Yeah, so just, do we want to say that right out in the minimum part? Or is it part of our weight of when we're assessing and interviewing and assessing?
It can go either way.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we added that as a preferred because of the results we saw in the survey. We, we haven't had this in any of our other, at our other districts, but we felt it was really important to put it preferred. And Ms. Heinz makes, has a good point. You can use that any way you'd like to if you have it preferred when, as you're comparing all the candidates. So that's why we recommended it be.
I like the idea of it being preferred and narrow as a tool to narrow it down when we get all of these applications that come in. But the comment was made, teaching experience, you want classroom teaching experience?
No.
No, okay. All right.
It's gonna be preferred.
So am I hearing that we're leaving it where it is? Okay.
Yeah, I think.
All right, anything else? All right.
The paragraph underneath where it has the salary range.
Yeah, we're not there.
We gotta talk about that next.
Okay. Are we good with qualifications? Okay.
Thank you very much. Those, that will be reflected in our one pager, which you already have. We'll make those changes on that. Okay.
Okay.
I have one more, because earlier in demonstrated experience, Ms. Edwin pointed out the qualities. Oh, I'm sorry. Off and on. I know you guys are in the back. Thank you. I, I'll push the button. The, thank you for helping. The experience leading the district that is ethically and culturally diverse, I think we had added effectively. So maybe adding effective, I don't know. You know, we had, we had made a change here and we want, do we want the change here? Is that?
So.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. My question, so looking at the first where we talked about Pinellas qualities, I mentioned leading a large school district that is ethically and culturally diverse to successful outcomes. I was wondering if somewhere in the first paragraph or the two paragraphs above, if we could mention the diversity of the district. That was what I was alluding to, to that part.
Okay.
I, I have a suggestion on that. It's going to be the second sentence where it says the visionary candidate must be eager to lead a consistently high-achieving, comma, forward-thinking, comma, and diverse school district. That's where I think it might fit in.
Thank you.
The third line down, yes.
Andrea, that's excellent. I'm looking at Beth back there.
Apparently, we have moved to just adding that. We're still talking about, I thought, the qualities.
Okay.
And what happened was she was asking, Nicole was asking if it should be part of the qualities. And it was suggested that it go there instead. So we're still on the qualities, but taking a side turn.
I was asking if we needed to edit that quality to mirror the edits we had done in demonstrated experience. That's what I was asking.
Okay.
Like, so we made some changes in demonstrated experience. Do we want them to also be reflected in qualities?
Okay, but if you're talking about.
Document, yeah, we made some changes under demonstrated experiences. The document labeled draft Pinellas qualities. We have demonstrated experiences. And then in this document, qualities and qualifications, we have qualities and some of them are very similar to demonstrated experiences. We edited some of the demonstrated experiences. Do we want to mirror those edits that were just made in demonstrated experiences in the quality section here?
Okay.
That's my question.
This is the only one we're going to use. We're not using the other one.
Not using the qualities.
Right, we're not using that. What we did is, that was our initial run, which we provided the board as soon as we did that. And then this is our final one we're going to use.
Okay.
We don't need that one. Correct. I'm sorry, we were trying to get information.
The qualities, we're still looking at the qualifications. Qualities are done. Qualifications.
Can you share what document we're looking at?
Right now, we're looking at these qualifications, qualifications and qualities. However, X out the qualities. We're only looking at the qualifications, minimum and preferred. The ones that were handed to you today.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I just hear someone say we're not using this document?
We are using the document that says draft Pinellas qualities.
Okay.
That we went through and added things to a minute ago.
I think you said this was a working document.
This was something they put together.
Doing different things.
And we're right now just discussing the minimum qualifications and preferred qualifications. This part, we have already decided, we just decided what we were going to use for our qualities.
So this was a working, internal working document that's not going to go to the candidates, what I'm hearing. I would review this as a going to the.
Well, that's what we had it when we received.
Okay. So we better make sure if we liked anything in here on the front or back, that if we think it should be in either, so these are the two documents that are going to the candidates, right?
Does it say draft?
It's the draft Pinellas qualities.
Okay, yes.
Add.
The answer's yes.
Thank you.
Correct. Apologies, but we were trying to get information out as soon as we could because we, we knew we couldn't meet the board deadline. So this is our final.
Yeah, the one that has the numbers, one, two, three, four, five, that one is going. And this document, when we finish it, the top, only the qualifications, minimum and preferred.
Those are incorporated in the ad. So why would this go? Right?
They'll be incorporated in the ad.
Yes, right, yes.
Okay, okay. So this, this doesn't.
It, when we're done, it'll all be one sheet.
Okay.
Right now, we're talking about the minimum qualifications and preferred, wherever you find it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So we've got the change of seven years educational leadership and three years of a cabinet level experience or equivalent. We have crossed out the superintendent, deputy assistant superintendent. And we talked about moving the teaching experience but left it as preferred. Have we done anything else? Is there anything else that people want to talk about?
No, we're done.
All right, so what would you like to discuss next?
Next is contract length.
Where we had the visionary candidate must be eager to lead a consistently high-achieving, forward-thinking and diverse school district. Did we want to include that?
Yes.
Yes, and that's on the one pager, which will, we're going to go ahead and talk about as soon as we get the rest of, fill the rest of it in. And then we'll go back. We're gonna, we'll include that in.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, contract length. If we'd recommend a three-year contract and I think Florida statutes has some provisions regarding contract length. But three years is normally standard. So that would be our recommendation that we, we would include in our ad.
Everyone okay with the three-year contract?
Yes.
Yeah. What was your question?
David's opinion.
Oh, David.
Yes, Dr. Vogel is correct. It does speak about administrators' contracts being lengths of about three years. When we speak more about contract negotiations, we can also discuss termination. So that three years will not necessarily mean three years locked in.
That you're stuck with a bad decision for three years. Did we make that? We're not going to do that. Hire the best.
We're gonna hire you, but don't screw up for three years.
Okay, so everybody's on board with three years. Next.
Next is salary.
All righty.
And salary, after we had an update that Mrs. Messina prepared last night, late, that has an update on some salaries and board members received this in addition to what you received on salaries in your package.
Can I explain why we have that bill?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we have the official salary analysis, we specifically use the annual report that districts turn in to the Florida Department of Education. So we use, so we can point to a document that every district fills out and it's consistent, regular information. So since the time that the last update has been completed at the Department of Education in Florida, we've had a number of superintendent changes. So the next update from the Department of Education will reflect the numbers that I pulled yesterday. But because we had so many new superintendents in Florida, we wanted to identify their salaries and see if that changed the average for the largest districts. So it, I like to point to an official document where I get the salaries from because if, for example, like in Pinellas, if you guys had given a raise to your, your superintendent mid-year, it would require us to be monitoring every newspaper to catch that raise as opposed to it being reflected in this official document. So the original analysis you received is based on the official document. This single page that you received update reflects the new salaries for the newly hired superintendents in the largest districts in Florida.
Okay, any comments on salary? I do.
Yeah, I do.
I would prefer that our range be from 275 to 300,000. And my reason is if you look at the top four that have 100, stopping with Duval at 125,000, we're looking at the superintendent having $275,000. And if you go down to like-sized districts, they're all under 300,000, 300, except for Dr. Greggo, who has been here for 10 years or more, 12, whatever.
We have to remember, yeah, his salary is based on being here for some time. I would even go a little lower, Carol. I would suggest maybe 260 to 300.
Okay.
You know, give ourselves, you can go 250 to 300, give ourselves a range.
I mean, I'm good with that. I'm just, I'm more concerned about the top number than I am the others. Caprice?
Um, I was thinking 250.
Okay. I hear 250. I'm gonna sound like an auctioneer pretty soon. I'm, I'm hearing 250.
I, I do appreciate all this information. Thank you.
I think that the, the county above us and the county below us, they're at 255. I think that's where we should start.
So you're talking 255 or 250? Are you okay?
Well.
Either?
Yeah, we can always go up. You can't go down, so. I think 255 because that's, he would be in the same range as the other two counties.
Yeah, but we want the best. We want the best. I, I think 270.
I, I do want to point out, if you look at, for example, Lee County, the superintendent that was leaving had 209 and they, in order to bring the next person in, it jumped to 255. If you look at Polk, they started at 238 with their previous, it jumped to 255. So I, we just want to prepare you that in negotiations, you know, there is, now you guys happen to have a very experienced, and that's what I would call Dr. Greggo, more than, more than saying he's been there. Years, but the amount of experience that he has. So, so I think that it's fair, but I also will tell you the 300 figure on the top end. Some people, that will be a, they will look to see, are you willing to go above 300? Which doesn't mean in hiring, but it means that they recognize that you, you would have some ability over the years to get over that number.
This reflects over the years?
Over the years, I'm willing to go over that number.
No, no, I'm not.
Not when I hire them.
Right, so most people would look at the salary range and they would say, if I've never been a superintendent before and I, and I don't have all of the experiences, I can expect to come in on the lower side. But if I really meet the qualifications, I should come in at the middle. But the fact that you're willing to even go maybe to 305 in the posting is an indication to me that you, that you, that you have some level of flexibility. I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. I do know we've had two people call and inquire and the, they wanted to know if it was ever, if it was going to end up being over 300. That's all I'm saying. I just want you to know kind of the questions that we've been asked.
But they can look at the current salary of the superintendent and see that we're willing to go over 300 because that's what we're paying. But we're not willing to go over that in the very beginning, is my thought.
I think it's also part of this funnel idea, you know, limiting, we don't want to limit people who apply necessarily. You know, giving ourselves a little room. Like, like, like you said, if somebody has less experience and they're new, they'll probably know they'll be at the lower part of the range. If somebody has a lot of experience or is excited about our district for the reasons they are, then you might. I mean, I'm open to going, you know, higher than, you know, we could say.
Hey, Nicole?
I'd like to hear your opinion, David, since you've done several contract negotiations about the impact of the scale.
Well, I, I've been here for a couple of contract negotiations of superintendents and what has been said is, is absolutely true. It really depends upon who you hire. And, and then the negotiations begin. So you do not look at what you're going to pay somebody when you're negotiating or when you're selecting and debating who you want to make. want to make an offer to. And then at that time, you will have a board meeting where you will vote to say, this is the person we want to hire, and you want to, or you authorize me to start contract negotiations. And then I will meet with that person and their counsel, if they have any, and we will work towards a contract, not only dollars, but also language within the contract. And so, just in my experience, it has been, somebody who has been an experienced superintendent will look towards the higher end of the range. Somebody who hasn't will look towards the lower end of the range. That's just common sense. But I certainly can't speak to whether you're going to foreclose potential candidates by putting a cap at a certain level.
Thank you. I'm in the opinion, I think 275 is fair. And I think you go below that. In some ways, you're kind of diminishing our position. And I think by giving 275, it's understood that we expect good things from you. And you go lower, then sort of in the back of your mind, it kind of sets a lower bar. And we, 275, and I think particularly the way things are going, and look at the massive responsibility, and put that in the corporate world, and you see, superintendent's still a pretty good deal financially. And I think at the upper end, I don't know why we have to put a cap on the upper end. 275, and we'll give it to you based on your performance. We think you merit more than we give you more. Certainly, Dr. Greggo has certainly earned what he's, and that wasn't like he went from here to there right away. He worked, and he worked his way up. And I, I think that's good faith on our part. And I think we demand, by doing that, we're demanding good faith on the other part. And it's just by two cents, I think, 275, I think is pretty, pretty good bargain this day and age. And I'm not real sure 275 shouldn't be 280, but I'll go.
In that case, would it make sense to put like 260 to 300?
I have to agree with Bill on that. We have to be competitive in what we're willing to offer as well. We're going down. If we're looking at Lee and Polk, and they're at 255, if we're going lower than that in Pinellas, it sets the bar lower competitively in the job market. And so if, you know, you're looking at Duval, they're starting at 275, and they're pretty, you know, fairly equivalent as far as full-time employees, as far as annual revenues. I think if we are starting there, it gives us still room for negotiation. But if we, I, I have to agree with him that if we set the bar low, we're also putting the expectation low, and we might get less experienced applicants.
So what do you suggest as a range?
I think starting 275. And we can negotiate.
Okay. What, what are we hearing? Where are we landing? And let's, have we reached?
Upper end of that range?
We reached consensus on the 275?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, one, two, how many? Everybody okay with it? Anybody who cannot live with 275 as the starting? Okay. Now let's talk about the cap.
I need one.
Okay, well, okay.
Is there, let me, I mean, if.
We need it.
If we put a number on here, and we're in negotiations, and we end up at a higher number, I mean, is there any?
The problem with that?
Yeah, it, it means you're not true to your word.
Well, you, well, you publish a range, but then you get candidates, and you have to respond to actual qualifications.
I, I, I'll let Dr. Vogel, I know he's jumping at the bit here, but I would recommend you have a cap on there just for negotiation purposes.
Suggest I'm not true to my word. I'm gonna talk about that.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend a cap, and I'd recommend it over 300. That's why we put that dot number down there. The other thing that, because we want someone to move to Pinellas County, and the housing costs now have just skyrocketed.
Yes.
And, and so, I mean, it's, we need to, if we get the right candidate, we need to be able to pay them. And, and I think if you're, if you come in, if you have it advertised over 300, you're gonna attract, you're gonna attract a different, your level of higher experienced people that have probably been superintendents.
Paid for what you get.
Okay, so you attract them at a higher salary, and then you go into negotiations, and you don't pay them that higher salary, then why do we bother to have it?
Well, you, no, you, you would pay them, you know, that's the maximum. You, people would apply. You, no one ever, if, if it's, if whatever you put is the maximum, that's, people know that they're not gonna get any more than that, as far as the base salary. Now, there's other ways, as David can tell you, and we go through the contracts, they'll add to it.
Well, I'm looking at 308, 309, for Dr. Greggo, who has been here, who has proven himself to that same amount, with someone that we're hiring that has not yet, they may have talked a good story, they may have shown us things that they've been able to do, but they have not proven that they can do it in Pinellas County. And so, that's my concern about making it higher. People will expect it to be higher. And, you know, I think they can find a house if they're making 300,000. You know?
Good question.
Okay, Caprice, and then, then Lisa.
I agree with you, Carol, just in comparison of the salaries. And that's also why I mentioned starting with the lower minimum, so then there is the opportunity to negotiate. And if we have the, the cap at 310,000, to the point you just mentioned, it doesn't give them room to grow or show that they've can meet the expectations of this district. Also considering that one of the preferred qualifications is experience with at least 25,000 students, and we have over 90,000. So just something to consider.
Lisa?
I have a question and a comment, but firstly, there are these numbers underneath the salaries. What are those? There's like a zero, there's a two, there's a four?
That's the rest of the salary. But the column was too narrow to hold all.
Oh, okay. Makes sense. I'm going, does that mean something to us?
Yeah.
As, I don't know. Okay, that makes sense. So, but to, to her point, if we're at 308 now, inflation's only getting more as time goes on. People want to see an increase, not a decrease, in our salary offering. I think, you know, they're seeing, if they're looking at it now, and they're saying, we're, we're paying this now. And we, let's just say, we start them at 275, you know, to 290 somewhere in there, and it's a negotiation, they're gonna expect to at least come to where we've left off now, at some point in the contract, or post the three years, if we renegotiate in three years, they're gonna expect to, to come. So I think the range suggested makes sense, up to 310.
Now, in three years.
Right.
They will have proven.
Right.
Whether they are a good fit for Pinellas County, at which point we can offer whatever. We can give a raise at whatever time we want.
They can negotiate, you know, an increase after three years. You know, if we're happy, we can, that all can be done in the contract. But I think there's a starting point range. I think that this is a good suggestion, up to 310.
Okay, so where are we with that?
250 to 310.
Okay, I'm hearing two people say 310?
Okay.
Okay.
Does Cook, would you feel more comfortable with 305?
I would feel more comfortable with 300. Yes, it, it is a compromise. I would feel better with 305. I, I still.
I think we go big, like you're saying, with the funneling down, go 250 to 310. And then if the person is just not, if we don't think that it's commiserate with what they're, their experience with what they're asking, then they don't make it out of the negotiation.
Okay, and so they, they come in looking at it, thinking that, okay, we're willing to go 310, and they want 300, and we are not willing to go there, then do they pull out and go elsewhere?
Yes.
Because we may not be the only district with which they're applying.
Okay.
So we're willing to.
Contract negotiation. I think we want to get as many applicants as we can, find the best person, make the recommendation for the best, very best person we can find with the most qualifications. And then if we can reach a contract agreement, then that's when you have a job. But before that, you know, I, I think we want to have good applicants. And I think you're right, it's expensive to, the profession is underpaid from the bottom to the top in this industry. So the, we want to get the best we can get.
So my question then is, if we get someone that we believe is going to be perfect, or good for the district, we're willing right off the bat to pay him $310,000 with no, no proven track record in Pinellas?
Yes.
Are we willing to do that?
There's a really a whole lot between 305 and.
Go ahead, Dr.
Dr. Vogel, I'm sorry.
No, we're, we haven't had that experience at all. We think that the 275 to 305 would be a good range, but we don't, we just haven't had people come in and demand that the top of the salary schedule in our searches that, that I recall, you know, it, you know, unless they would have substantial experience, or they were coming from another district that was, they were making more than that. And then, then I think if you, you know, you, you see some of the salaries here, if one of these people decided they wanted to apply for Pinellas, and they're making more than that, you know, they know that the range is up to, if it was up to 305, that was the maximum they were gonna get. So I think that gives you the, you know, a pretty good range right there.
Ali?
And this, with the salaries, does that, on top of that, do they have a car expense? Do they have, so it's really not 305, there's, it's higher than that?
It could be. It could be, right, could be, right.
So I mean, i- if somebody's paying for the car and the gas, the salary will come up, and they will be able, I mean, that, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, but comparatively, it's not.
Yeah. Look at, look at what equivalent another industry is right.
But you're comparing it to what, Lisa?
So what's on this list?
If you're looking at Palm Beach, Orange, look at the size of their districts, and look at the budgets. If you're comparing it to the people that have same-size budget and roughly the same number of students.
They're at 255, I just said.
Yeah, we've already decided 275 is the bottom.
We're above that.
Right.
So now we're looking at the top number. And I've heard 310, 305, and 300. So what are we doing with 310? How many want to go to 310? About 305? All right, let's go with 305.
305, that's good. Yeah, it sounds like reduced.
I know. So I told you it's gonna sound like an auctioneer soon.
And Ms. Cook, I will say this. Sometimes applicants call us, and they say, gosh, I see that they're advertising 275 to 305. Do you think I'll be able to get to the 305? And having had this conversation, this is why it's important for us to hear it and have this conversation with you. We can say, you know, you've not been a superintendent before, that's gonna be a really heavy lift. Or, depending on the applicant, we can say, well, gosh, you were superintendent of the year in your state, you've been in a similar-sized district. Yeah, they might see the benefit of that. So it's important for us to hear you guys and what your thoughts are on that, because applicants will call us and ask some kinds of questions. And we can say, odds are, it's not gonna go over 300, unless you've got some pretty good demonstrable evidence of why that should be so.
Okay. Now, you know, people can come in and bedazzle you, and, and then you find out they interviewed you well. So, yeah.
And one more comment on that. What we'll do, too, we'll have it scheduled, we'll take Dr. Rego's contract, and David will go through and review all the provisions and that. And, and so you can kind of get an idea of what's all the other possible benefits are that might be potentially negotiated, too. So we'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Good discussion.
Do you mind, Dr. Vogel? So yeah, just, just to reiterate one final point on this, and, and that is, the ad, as it is written, says that that will be the salary range, plus competitive benefits. So that is where Mrs. Hind, to even your point, I'm sorry for the flippant comment, I obviously didn't mean that you guys were gonna be lying. But if somebody comes in who really bedazzles the board, then they can, you might be willing to go more on an allowance for a retirement package, or an automobile, because it is true that all of these districts, and I've seen many of the contracts from these other districts, of what we used to call the Yellow Brick Road districts, right, about a dozen districts that are our size and geographically locate, located near us. They all have additional fringe benefits. So, thank you.
Of course, you came in, turned in.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, next?
Yeah, it was. There was your bonus, it just run the middle of the Atlantic.
Mr. Kersky, can I ask you a question? You know, we've talked about, they come in, they bedazzle us. Well, we've had that in this district, and it really backfired on us. If we get a candidate, and we, we agree on that person, and after a year, we realize it was a lot of hot air, what are, do we have to pay them the full salary for the next two years, or is that part of negotiations?
No, it's not even part of negotiation. It's part of law. It's statutory that there is about 10, 10 or 12 years ago, they passed a statute that there is a limited amount of severance pay that could be provided.
Twenty weeks.
And so e- even a maximum of 20 weeks pay. So that's gonna be part of negotiation. But even beyond that, I will attempt to negotiate a more favorable termination clause.
Okay.
For the district where, without getting into details, I, I will look out for the best interest of the board.
Okay, I just needed.
Where they pay us back.
Okay.
I'm joking.
I'm just, you know, that's a lot of money, and I don't want to be held accountable for that, and then have to pay a new superintendent.
And basically be paying two salaries.
Exactly.
That won't happen.
The fact that that happened is what led to the new law.
Very close to us.
And we'll be working closely with, with David and throughout the process when that comes out, too. And, and this is why it's really good for us to hear the board's feelings on that. So, thank you. Now, we want to move over to the, the ad, the one pager, we call it. And I think Andrea had a suggestion that will address Mrs. Edmund's suggestion in the second paragraph, or the second, the third sentence. Andrea, do you want to provide that?
Yeah, you bet. It was actually the second sentence in the first paragraph.
Got it.
Starts with the visionary candidate must be eager to lead a consistently high achieving, I would put a comma, forward-thinking, comma, and diverse school district.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna keep this to one page, looking at John and Beth and Jen to make sure we keep this on one page, but we will do it. Okay, the segment, is that, okay, okay, great. Okay, and I'm gonna turn it over to John now, if that's, sounds okay. And we'll, we've, we now have everything that we need to go ahead and complete our advertisement, and move it out. John?
Right. And if you, if you will still, please just follow with me on the one-page ad that we were just looking at. Of course, we have the minimum quality, preferred qualifications done now. If you would jump down to the application process and deadline, I wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with, first initially, that all applications will be sent directly to me as the FBA representative. From that standpoint, as complete applications come in, I will forward those to Kathy, and then she would be able to forward them to the board members. If that meets with the board member's approval, we'll move forward with that process. The one question would be, would the board like them on a weekly basis, every Friday afternoon, or Thursday afternoon, or just as they come in complete? I can send them to Kathy, and then she could send them out to you. We would like to send out to the board, say, on whatever day you designate, or as they come in, and then within a day or two after that, we would have those posted to the website.
Board members? Once a week, very, the whole pile.
Every Friday.
Okay.
Anybody prefer dates?
Friday.
Friday, good. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do it every Friday.
Yep.
And then the contents of a complete application, some of these applications can get pretty extensive and loaded with a lot of stuff. So we would recommend that a complete application consists of a, a current cover letter to a current resume with only three letters of reference, no more than three. I'll get some candidates that'll send in 25. I'll get some candidates that'll send in twenty-five. I'll have to call them and say, you need to pick me three. And let's maybe consider throwing away those that were written seven years ago and get some, some new ones. But three letters of recommendation, and then their college transcripts to verify degrees. What I would do then for the board is, because they'll come to me in bits and pieces sometimes or disjointed, I'll have every application in the same format of their cover letter first, followed by the resume, the three reference letters, and then their college transcripts. And some folks will send state certifications, which is good for y'all to know, so that will be a complete application package.
And we won't receive anything but that.
That's all you'll receive.
Perfect.
The, the only variance would be sometimes there might be a Florida cert certificate and an out-of-state certificate, maybe a master's transcript and a doctorate, because they want to, you know, show both the master's is confirmed and the doctorate. But other than that, things will be very consistent. Thank you. So that will kind of complete us for the one-page ad. We have everything we need now to do that. And as you know, our ad, we are going, we're scheduled to post on the fourteenth, which is next week. So with that being said, I believe you have in your packet a list of our advertisement venues that we would like to have you direct us on which ones you would like to advertise in. If I could briefly just speak to the first five, or typically, I will tell you the first five venues and organizations or who we typically advertise with, are the American Association of School Administrators, and we are advertising for the thirty-day period. So you can see the cost for each, for that ad with the AASA. We also like to, for diversity reasons and trying to attract a, a diverse candidate pool, we would like to recommend the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. The price there for that six-week ad is, is represented. Education Week will probably certainly be a must, we would recommend. They, they really have a, a large following. The Florida Association of School Administrators, even though probably every administrator in Florida already knows about Dr. Greggo's upcoming retirement. There are a lot of out-of-state candidates who keep an eye on AA, the, on the F, on FASA site to determine what positions are coming available. We'd recommend that. Then, of course, we would like to add to the National Alliance of Black School Educators for the thirty-day ad as well. The others listed there are, it's the good word, they're free, and we get a lot of coverage from those groups as well. Our one-page ad would be used to send out for some of these notices. So would like to get some direction from the board on which of these top five venues, if not all, would you like to advertise in?
I would like to defer to Dr. Greggo first. Where, where do superintendents look, in your opinion? And have we missed any that might be a good place to advertise?
The, the place that they most frequently would look at is Education Week and the Florida Association of School Administrators.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that others are not frequenting.
Right, but you would suggest that we absolutely, definitely do those two. Okay. Did we leave off any?
How about Facebook?
My third one there, if I had to pick this, the third one would be the American Association of School Administrators.
Yeah. Right, yeah, so.
None of them heard.
So we haven't, they're all on the list, is what I'm saying, okay? Okay, board members?
I think it's, it's, it's not a significant investment, and, and I think we advertise in all, and I think they're great suggestions. Thank you for finding those, and whether it's thirty days or sixty days, I know they're due on April thirteenth. Is that the right date? So I guess we would make it longer if we had to, but we start with the thirty days.
And we're putting it out March fourteenth, so April, that's a month.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
Yeah.
Everyone else, we're good with this? All right.
Ms. Cook, just, I'm sorry, just some additional information. Edweek provides about, and, and historically, when we place ad, Edweek provides about twenty-five, twenty-six percent of our respondents. If we do a single search, the American Association of School Administrators, which was referenced, is about twenty-one percent. Florida Association of School Administrators, about nineteen percent. FSBA and our contacts are about eighteen percent. And then your other two associations there are about seven to nine percent each. So I think you've identified exactly what Dr. Greggo has said, so I will validate his input.
We have data now to show that you were right.
It's his experience that comes to the top.
All righty, so I'm hearing advertise for all of these. Perfect, move on. All right.
And I'm, and I am glad to say, I want to say, I am very glad to see, to see the Association of Latino and the National Alliance of Black School Educators. You know, as someone in the business community as well, it's, we're doing everything we can to find all the different associations to reach a diverse pool of, of job applicants. It's not easy. So constantly trying to find the different groups and who we can get the jobs in front of, so I'm really glad to see that. Thank you.
Yep, very good. All right, is there anything else you want to cover?
Oh, yeah, Beth.
And Jen, Jen, this, excuse me, thank you for advertising on the website, another awesome document. And once we fill, she can fill in the rest of the blanks here, based on our discussion today. And we'll, we'll send this out also.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that I have had a conversation with Kathy. And with regard to the actual application packets, we're going to be, we're going to try to figure out a way to use the SharePoint file for your access. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we've already sort of discussed that. And so John will do his side, then I'll connect it with Kathy, and we'll put it up in a shared SharePoint that way.
Righty, very good.
Beth, you got it.
That's just a document that Libby, our wonderful graphic designer, put together. So we have the generic information in there now, and then we will add all of the qualities and minimum qualifications, preferred qualifications, the deadlines and such, but this was just to give you an idea of the nice, you know, pretty brochure that we'd be posting.
Yeah, and this is designed to be folded in half?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will also be on the website, just as individual pages, so they can scroll.
Comments? Everybody good with it? All righty. Okay, anything else that you want to cover?
Just the only thing I, I think in referencing back to our timeline, we did have an item to kind of discuss the board's direction on either semi-finalist or finalist as we get to that point with our schedule. I don't think we need to get into a lot of detail today, but if should the board, and, and a lot of boards determine, once applications come in and they kind of do an overview, that might guide a board to say, we can go right to finalist, or we can't. Our timeline does give us the option, if you elect not to do semi-finalists, we just pull that out, and then we just keep with our timeline, so we, we complete that. So I don't believe we can get into a, we'll need to get a lot of discussions about that. And again, our timeline, timeline is up to date now, and I do appreciate the conversation about the May eleventh date. That will help me in kind of working on the schedule once we get closer to that time.
Yeah, and I think once we know how many people we're going to be interviewing, it'll make a big difference.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Caprice?
Um, just one comment, and that's to update the front page to mirror the changes that we mentioned in the first, or in the ad.
Yeah, they are. And that'll happen, the, the information that we have decided today is what will go in this. This is just placeholder kind of thing. Okay, any other questions, if anyone else has any clarification? Kathy?
Well, we talked about the, how the applications will be sent email to me, and then we will put them in a SharePoint folder. Are there any board members who would like the hard copies printed? And then I would make those copies available weekly, Mrs. Edman.
Yeah, I was just going to say if they would get in touch with you after, and let you know whether electronic is okay, or do you want paper copies on which you can make notes or whatever?
Okay.
Okay, all right. And.
Feel bad about paper copies. I like paper copies, so I print them myself.
Yep, especially when you're doing something like that, because to be able to hide it, yeah. All right, anything else? And I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right. We need to take a five-minute recess, or can I go right into the meeting?
I'm good with going straight in. Anybody else?
Mr. Kurski?
Yeah, I think we do need a break.
Okay.
Five-minute break.
All righty.
I'm going to run upstairs and and see if the, the lady would still like to attend the different meeting. She was only precluded from attending the work session.
Okay.
So if you can give me five or ten minutes, and I believe you also need a little bit.
All right, let's adjourn, and we'll start at quarter to eleven. How's that?
All right.